All right, everyone, let me make sure people can hear me. Do we have any echoes this evening? We do have an echo. No, I do hear. Oh, here, let me switch this way. You can have a microphone that way. Okay, do we have? Well, Jim stole mine, so I'm stealing yours. Yeah, okay. I'm still hearing an echo. It's the lobby?
Give me a second.
Okay.
On?
No, I turned it off.
Oh, got it.
Thank you, Jeff. Test, test? Test, test? Is it my computer? I'm hearing something out of my computer.
Turn your speaker off.
Where is it? Nope, mine's off.
Mine mute.
I'm not in the meeting yet.
Excuse us for tech. Oh, technical issues?
Of course they do.
Is echo gone? I think so. All right, let's get. Oh, no, I still hear it somewhere.
It's your computer.
But it's muted.
It's the, um.
The speaker.
Yeah, the speaker, that little speaker icon.
Okay, there we go. So, all right. You would think by now, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, no, I don't need two mics. Okay, so, welcome to the Wednesday, March 22nd, meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. Before we get started here, we'll have Becky Pepper give the particulars for running a hybrid meeting.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Becky Pepper, Planning Manager, and I'll be helping to facilitate the Zoom video portion of the meeting this evening. Also joining me here in the room is Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, and we'll both be working alongside the chair to help facilitate the meeting proceedings. As mentioned, I do have a few housekeeping items before we begin this hybrid meeting. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded, being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. Please remember to mute yourself during the meeting when you're not speaking. The chat function for this meeting is disabled, and so all chats will go directly to me. Unless you are participating during the meeting, please turn your video off. This will allow active meeting participants to be seen on screen. You will still be able to hear the meeting, and when you are participating, please turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat to me. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distraction, and with that, I will now turn the meeting back over to the chair.
Thank you, Becky. Onto communications. Do we have any written communications from the public to receive?
All communications are included as part of your packet.
Do we have any communications to receive from staff, planning commissioners, or other commissioners?
None this evening.
Do we need to receive any written action of any waiver requests, determinations made by the city engineer?
Also none this evening.
Disclosure of ex parte communications? Seeing none? Declaration of abstentions from specific agenda items this evening? Okay, I'm keeping an eye. Commissioner Munch is online, so if I don't, if I miss something from you, Commissioner Munch, please yell. Now that it's the time for general public comment, so this is a time when the public can comment on something that is not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda? Seeing none in the chamber, any online? Not seeing any general public comment. All right, before we start our regular agenda this evening, we have a request to switch items number one and two in terms of the order in which we take these. It does appear that item two is likely to be a much shorter item than number one, but that would, I'd need to call for a motion and a vote by the commission if that is acceptable to deal with item number two first and then item number one.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Could you call the vote, Jeff? Thank you.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Baroto?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Duvar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso?
Yes.
Commissioner Munch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Thank you, so we'll start with item number two, which is considering a request to rezone approximately 0.86 acres from IG General Industrial to Commercial Strip at 623 Locust Street. Luke Mortensen is our planner for this project.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Chair Ashworth just noted, this item is a request to rezone approximately 0.86 acres from the General Industrial District to the Commercial Strip District for the parcel currently addressed at 623 Locust Street. So we're up in North Lawrence for this request. The subject parcel is located on the north side of Locust Street between North Sixth and North Seventh Streets. The subject property directly abuts the Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way. So here's a closer look at the subject property. It is surrounded by several zoning districts and land uses at this time. To the north and to the west is the existing General Industrial District, which includes the Union Pacific Railroad and rail yard. To the south is the single-dwelling residential office district that has developed with duplex uses. And to the east is the Commercial Strip District. This commercial node at North Seventh and Locust Streets has developed with several small-scale retail sales uses and then several non-ground-floor dwelling unit uses. So as required by our code, the applicant has submitted a concept plan for the subject property. The applicant controls the lot to the east of the subject property that's addressed at 645 Locust Street. This lot is already zoned CS. The applicant is working with staff on an administratively-approved minor subdivision replat at this time to combine 645 Locust Street, that's the corner lot, and the subject property, that's 623 Locust Street, into one single lot. Last May, the Planning Commission approved a variance for the right-of-way with standards for Locust Street adjacent to this property. You may remember that. This proposed rezoning to the CS district would create one single zoning district across the entire future lot. If the minor subdivision is approved and the zoning were not approved, the new lot would have split zoning. This is generally not recommended and makes redevelopment or development challenging for both staff and applicants. The applicant has proposed a potential mixed commercial and residential use development. However, at this time, no specific land uses or businesses have been identified. If rezoned, the applicant would need to obtain an administratively-approved site plan prior to redevelopment of this property. The applicant would work with staff on items ranging from off-street parking, landscaping, lighting, and ensuring compliance with the community design guidelines amongst other items at that time. I'll refer back to the staff report for a full analysis of the city's review and decision-making criteria. However, I will note that the proposed rezoning satisfies several of the comprehensive plans, growth and development, and Lawrence neighborhoods and housing chapters' goals. Locust Street has several small commercial nodes between North Seventh and North Second Streets. This proposed rezoning would contribute and slightly extend, or excuse me, would contribute to the corridor's small-scale commercial uses. The subject property is not vacant at this time. There's an existing tree trimming business operating there. The existing IG district in this area is a longstanding manufacturing, or excuse me, is a remnant of the area's longstanding manufacturing and railroad character. There are several pockets of IG zoning in North Lawrence that are more conducive to true industrial uses than this property. It's wedged between the railroad right-of-way and the Locust Street right-of-way. Industrial district setbacks, especially along a collector's street like Locust Street, severely limit where an industrial use could be located. The Commercial Strip District setbacks are comparatively reduced. This proposed rezoning would not dramatically reduce the city's existing stock of IG properties either. In the staff report, there are some graphics that show where the majority of those properties are located. Staff does not believe this proposed rezoning will detrimentally affect nearby properties. The proposed CS district will be an extension of the existing abutting CS zoning at North Seventh Street and Locust Street. It will create a small buffer of CS district between the existing RSO to the south and the IG district to the north. Currently, the only separation between the RSO district and IG district is the Locust Street roadway. A denial will likely maintain the status quo of this property with small-scale, non-site plan, more industrial-type uses. Finally, I'll quickly note that, as many of you know, both the Land Development Code and our comprehensive plan carefully regulate the expansion of the CS district. During our review, staff determined that neither the CN1 or the CN2 districts were viable alternatives, and that this proposed rezoning does satisfy the code's strict standards for CS district expansion while supporting the redevelopment of an underutilized property. With that, I'll conclude and recommend the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Commission to rezone approximately 0.86 acres from the General Industrial District to the Commercial Strip District located at 623 Locust Street. With that, I'll leave the review and decision-making criteria up on the screen, and then I believe the applicant is with us tonight as well.
Yes, thank you. Would the applicant care to speak to this project?
Good evening, Paul Warner Architects. First off, thank you for rearranging the agenda. It's greatly appreciated. I really don't have anything. Luke, awesome, awesome staff report. I think you summed up, you know, we have CS on the adjacent lot already to the east that the same owner owns. Think something here goes better certainly than IG backing up to the railroad. So we're excited to do something with the lot and look forward towards your support. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll turn to public comment on item number two this evening. Is there any public comment on item number two? Seeing none in the chamber, I'll look online. Is there anybody online who would like to speak to item number two? Okay, no public comment, so I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Got a thought?
All right.
I'm always cautious about seeing industrial land slip away because once it's gone, it's gone, and it's tough to get it back. And we need commercial tax-based capability there, but going to CS, we don't lose that revenue opportunity for the city, and it does seem to fit. The future plans does seem to fit really well into that little segment of the neighborhood. Like, just imagine that mixed-use kind of a development that adds to what's already kind of a really cool, walkable part of Lawrence. I've gone through the nine criteria on this rezoning request. It seems to fit it all for me, so I'm happy to support.
Other comments? I have to say, I too, yeah, I do think this is fits. I also like the fact that it's a graduated buffer to the residential, the Commercial Strip, as opposed to the industrial, so.
Great point. Make a motion. Make a motion to approve rezoning Z-23-5 approximately 0.86 acre, 0.86 acres from IG District to CS District for the property currently addressed as 623 Locust Street, based on the findings presented in the staff report, and forward to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval.
One second?
Second.
Mr. Carter? Discussion? There are none? Could you call the vote, Jeff?
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Baroto?
Yes.
Commissioner Duvar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso?
Yes.
Commissioner Munch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Let's see, we are now back to item number one. This is to consider approving a preliminary plat for Hunter's Hill subdivision, 146 lot subdivision on 61 acres. Staff presenting this project is Mary Miller.
Good evening, Mary Miller, City/County Planner, and I will put my screen up quick. And as you mentioned, this is a preliminary plat, a Hunter's Hill subdivision. It is approximately 61 acres. It's located at the end of Hillsong Circle, and it's just south of Interstate 70. On this graphic, it's outlined in green. All the areas in blue are areas that are within the city of Lawrence's boundary. The subject property was annexed and rezoned in 2022, and so this preliminary plat is the next step in the development process. If the preliminary plat is approved, the next step would be to submit a final plats for each phase of the project. The residential portion would then be able to develop just through building permits for the residences. The portion that's zoned GPI would require a site plan. That's proposed for a future school for the Perry-Lecompton School District, and the open space zone portion is not developable. This is a graphic showing the layout of the preliminary plat. We have the large lot that I mentioned that's zoned GPI. This is planned for that Perry-Lecompton School District property. To the south, we have two tracks. One is zoned OS, and this was zoned OS as an additional protective measure with the rezoning. And so this protected area is actually counting toward the protection area required for the residential district. In addition, there's a small tract in the RS5 zone property, and these both carry, contain stand-to-mature trees. And then there's 147 lots in the residential district, and this plat is proposed to be final-plated and developed in five phases. A communication was included in your packet submitted by a property owner at 35, or 3853 Hillsong Circle, and that's marked at the red dot. And they had requested this item be deferred. There's a property line dispute they're having with the owner of the property within the plat. And I referred that to the city attorney, and he indicated that's a private matter, and the plat could move forward, and they could continue to work on their property line dispute. And he's here tonight, I believe, if you have any questions on that. The layout of the preliminary plat does vary from that which was shown on the concept plan for the annexation and the rezoning. In the bottom right corner, we see the concept plan. It had more of a grid-street layout. However, when they did the engineering and the work for the preliminary plat, they determined that that was not possible, and so they would have this more of a perimeter road with the interior cul-de-sacs. And they provided justification for the need for this layout. We had suggested that they reconfigure the roads, and they provided their justification, which was approved by the city engineer due to the topography and the location of this property. The staff report has a graphic showing the various easements, and I thought I'd go through these. The gray areas are the utility easements that are intended to serve every lot. The purple areas are easements for Evergy's. They're exclusively for Evergy's overhead lines, and the applicant is proposing to move some of Evergy's infrastructure and easements. However, Evergy and the applicant have not quite worked that out yet. So one of the conditions on the plat is that Evergy's infrastructure and easements will be shown per Evergy's approval. And if this required a reconfiguration of the lots or anything else on the plat that was significant, it would be returned back to the Planning Commission. The green areas is a 100-foot-wide gas easement. That's a Magellan easement, and they commented they do have strict restrictions on their easement. There can be nothing placed in that easement, no soil, rocks, play equipment, no fences, unless they have approval. You would take written approval from Magellan, and so they asked for a note to be added to the plat to make that clear to property owners. And that is one of the recommended conditions as well. And then in the northwest corner, we have the blue area. That's a drainage easement. And in the staff report, I noted that not all of the studies, the review, had been completed. They were in the process. The traffic impact study had been accepted. Since then, the downstream sanitary sewer analysis had been revised, and that's been approved. The drainage easement still has some minor changes, so that's not quite completed yet, but the changes would probably not require a change to this drainage easement. So the easements are all pretty much where they're going to be, with the possible exception of the Evergy easements. The applicant is requesting a variance from Section 20-810A2 of the subdivision regulations. This section requires that the lots in the plat be designed in compliance with the dimensional requirements for the zoning district they're located in. This is the RS5 district, which requires a 40-foot-wide lot frontage. The lots that are highlighted in yellow are proposing a 31.78 lot frontage, and so the applicant did provide a variance request. And he noted that part of that hardship would be that meeting that frontage requirement would mean they would lose one lot. However, all the lots on Quarter Main Court have more than the required 40-foot of frontage, so it would be possible to narrow each lot somewhat and get the additional area needed to widen those lots to meet that 40-foot frontage. If this turned out not to be possible, or if it wasn't the applicant's preference to narrow these lots, then the frontage could be provided by removing one of those lots at the terminus. And so in staff's opinion, these changes would not constitute an unnecessary hardship. It is not possible for staff to determine if the requested variance would be in harmony with the intended purpose of the regulations. The frontage requirement, especially at the end of a cul-de-sac, is intended to provide the required area for the driveways and the street trees and for any utilities that might be necessary. And a graphic was not provided showing that this could be accommodated, so it's not possible to make a determination that this is in harmony with the intent of the code. This would have no impact on the safety, the public safety, health, or welfare, but as it would not constitute an unnecessary hardship, and it's not clear that it would be in compliance or in harmony with the intent of the code, staff does recommend denial of the variance. And so staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the conditions on the staff report, and denial of the variance. And the conditions are just listed here briefly. The note about the Magellan easements, the Evergy easements and infrastructure being shown. And condition three was having the lots along Quarter Main Court reduced so that the required 40-foot frontage was provided for everyone. However, the option would still remain if they decided just to remove one of the lots and keep the 50-foot frontage. You know, that would also be possible. And then the second two conditions are just notes to be added to the plan for the lot that's adjacent to the drainage easement. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer questions if you have any, and I believe the applicant is present today.
Yes, thank you. Would the applicant care to speak to this project? That would be Mr. Mallor.
C.L. Mallor, Land Planner, Chairman, Corby Russ. We agree with all the conditions except for one about the variance, and we did a quick sketch, and we'll put it up if we can. Can we share a screen? We'll get this from later. Your screen is running slowly.
Oh, okay, you are sharing it. You want this one?
Okay. We worked on this afternoon to get at least a 40-foot around that cul-de-sac for almost all the lots except for one, and lot 40, 50. Lot 50, we can get 35 feet there, which is.
Even with the three-car, then it can always go back. The other option we can have is on these lots, since there are way over, I mean, we're talking about 8,000, 15,000, 13,000, 10,000, you can move the setback of the house back in these lots and still get your driveway in. This variance was the same one we had for Monterey Way and Peterson last month, and it passed. It wasn't a problem, so. But this time, we're just asking for one lot, and that's lot 50, to be, allow that to have 35 feet instead of 40 there at the property lot. So we at least worked with trying to get, we don't want to really lose any lots. That's the main thing we're trying not to do. So we're down to just one lot to have that variance. And between now and when we do engineering, if we can find another five feet somewhere, we will try to see if we can do that, too. But this is, we were just trying to work that out. Otherwise, we're happy to answer any questions you have about the development of this. And the reason the change was just because of the topo, we're on a steep hillside. That's why, from the concept plan you guys saw last July, we came back with this. We met with a lot of builders, and they were having a hard time trying to figure out how to build on this hillside without trying to use a little bit, so. I hope any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mallor.
Thank you, Mr. Mallor. I'm sure we'll come back. We'll do public comment first, and then we'll have questions.
All right.
Want to end the share?
Yeah.
Okay.
Public comment? I want to speak to item number one.
State your name, and each public comment has three minutes, please.
Right. I'm Sandy Dixon. I'm the property owner at 3853 Hillsong Circle. And I did send the email in on 3/15, and it is in your agenda. I did have a second email on 3/17 to Mary, and I think that's the one she sent ahead to the lawyers, but it wasn't included in your packet. I do have copies of that, and it's probably available on your city server, but it should probably be looked at. So it was submitted on 3/17, well before the 3/20 deadline. I'd also like my comments to be considered. My objections are a little bit different than the ones raised by my neighbor, neighbors, which are also in your packets, although I do share their concerns on environmental aspects, traffic on the access roads, noise, and water drainage. In particular, on water drainage, my property has shifted four inches to the north since 2017. In fact, it shifted so much that several, two or three years ago, they had to bring the gas company out because the gas line to the neighbors to the north had actually pinched off in my yard as the hill moved. So there's a lot of movement on that hill. On the property in question is on the west side of my property, the east side of the proposed Hunter Hill addition. So part of the problem is, is that property with that, there's a small sliver that's owned by Williams Management that goes about 15 feet on the western side of my property, up the hill and past the other houses. That property, I guess, was concerned, we thought it was an easement. It's been taken care of by property owners, myself and two others, for 19 years. Mowing, maintaining it, fertilizing, all the works and building. Someone built a 10-by-12-foot barn on that property. So that's what part of the problem is. If they, if that is included into the next person's backyard, it's going to come about a foot away from my driveway, and it's going to be messed up with all of the easement and all of the lines that are running through there, and it's just going to be kind of a mess, besides the fact that it's slicing off a piece of what I thought was my property. There's also a barbed wire fence on the eastern edge of that property. That's why I thought that my property went up to that barbed wire fence. And there's also a five-foot ditch for drainage that does fill up with water and quite a bit of it. So I have a lot of concerns with the drainage on that hill. The property owners around me have a lot of issues with the drainage on that hill, and I just can't see that putting additional pressure on that hill is going to push my property on the end of it back into the street. Additionally, additive owners have owned that property since 2004, and so my lawyer has advised me to file suit for adverse possession. I would like to avoid that with Mr. Williams, if at all possible, for that small piece of land. And also, I would like to work that out with him. In addition, the reason why the city shouldn't approve the plat where it is, there's an incorrect legal description on lots 5 through 11 in Block 5. They're incorrect and contain more area than they should.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll come back to that issue.
Thank you.
Other people wishing to speak to item number one?
I'm Pamela Neal. I'm at 3808 Hillsong Circle, and I think most of us up on this hill are having erosion problems. I've got major foundation problems going on right now, plus my seat, my roof is starting to cave in. The hill is not stable. There's a lot of water drainage. Almost everybody up there has had foundation problems, serious foundation problems. I sit on the side of the hill. My house is almost slipping. I'm really concerned about this project going in across the street from me, right above me. And Magellan, the land with Magellan, I'm right next to Magellan there. And you should see the soil that has drained off on my property, because I own that lot, too. There's a lot of drainage up there. A lot of cracks going on in basements, a lot of basement problems. So I'm all against this project. So that's all I've got to say, but nice meeting you.
Thank you. Other people who would like to speak to project number one, item number one? Anybody online that would like to speak to item number one? No? Okay. If there's no more public comment, then I'll bring this back to the commission for discussion. Oh, actually, let me, point of order, would the applicant care to address the issues brought up by public comment?
I wasn't sure exactly where they are. I know they're on the west side, I mean, on the east side of our property, which lots they own, I wasn't sure. But it's required in the building to figure out where your rock is along that side. There's going to be inspections on that before they build the basements. Drainage-wise, it's going to be a backyard. We're required to do some kind of grading plan. The new stormwater engineer is requiring that, so we will take care and make sure that that drainage goes down the hill, not back into their backyards. So I don't know how to address that until we start doing, you know, grading plan for back there on the, behind there. And it's only going to be, right now, they're getting, if they're getting water from everything, east, from the west to their east, we've only got 110-foot lot, they got a street. So that water will go down the street. So it'll be some of the extra water that is coming, if it is coming towards them, I can't say that for sure, but if it is, we're going to catch that and take it on down the hill. It won't go to their lot, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. We may have some more questions about that as we go forward. All right, I'll bring this back to the, for discussion for the commission, please.
One of the things, on page four, the longer I've been on the commission, the more I hear about affordable housing. And in here, you say, "The applicant noted that permanent affordable housing would be provided as part of the community benefit," because the applicant indicated that the affordable housing would be provided with a later phase of the project. So could I hear, what is affordable housing and?
Definition of affordable housing is as many lots as you can get, as dense as you can get on a piece of property. Because the streets, the storm, the water, all costs, and that's what adds to the cost of the lot. Now, how much that house costs to build is all based on market at this point in time. Lumberage, what, tripled in the last two years? We have no control of that. We do have control about how many lots we put on a piece of property, as much as we can, and try to cut that cost for the infrastructure, streets and storms and stuff. I mean, that's the only thing we can really control. And that's the best we can do for affordable. I struggle with the definition of affordable housing all the time, and no one can really give me a good answer for what it really is, other than having as dense as houses as you can, short of an apartment complex. That makes sense?
I guess that's the best answer there can be. I don't know that we've had anybody come in here that believes for the average individual in Douglas County that there is such an animal as affordable housing. There is very expensive housing relative to the income. And so I, I was just concerned when I saw, I thought maybe you had some magic wand that you were going to wave that, that could provide actually affordable housing to people in Douglas County. And I hear the answer is no.
No. I mean, we can do this, unless, Adams, you got a better answer? Adam, go ahead.
I'm Adam Williams. I'm the applicant. Just to be clear, when we came in here for our annexation request, we did indicate we're going to provide two lots at cost, okay? What they did with those lots after that, I mean, there's going to be covenants and restrictions, right? We're not going to let them build just whatever they want, but we're going to give them two at cost. And so when it comes to density, like this variance we're talking about, if we take away a lot, well, guess what? The whole project costs us a little bit more. It costs a little bit more for those two affordable housing units. So we've agreed to that. What phase we're going to do it in? We're probably going to do it in Phase 3. We need to, we need to pay for everything upfront first, that way, you know, we can at least break even before we start giving away. We're happy to do that and donate to the, to the cause. But just to be clear, when we came in here for annexation, we said we'd do two lots at cost. Now, do we know what the cost is yet? No. Everything we're talking about tonight helps us determine what that cost is. So, I mean, we're going to provide it to them. We're not experts in affordable housing by any means. I'm not, you know, we reached out to the folks that are, and they said they can make it work. How they have their economics working, I don't know.
Who's this?
Rebecca Buford was part of that. Monty, Monty?
Says tenants to homeowners?
Yeah. No, he's, he sits on the board of affordable housing. Suck up. Yeah, suck up. So I talked to those two folks, because they're my go-to when I talk about affordable housing, because they know it better than anybody. And so they directed me in this, in this way. And that's the best I can do.
If I might direct the conversation and discussion a little bit, while the number of lots here is certainly pertinent to the preliminary plat, the affordable housing issue was an issue with the annexation and the zoning. But considering a preliminary plot, a preliminary plat, sorry, like I said, the number of units, we'll, we'll get to affordable housing, but the sort of discussion of what is affordable housing and what is a community benefit sort of came with the previous discussion about annexation and, and the community benefit. Now we're at the preliminary plat. So we need to, so we need to move and discuss to the preliminary plat, which might involve the number of units, to get to your, your question, but just to direct the discussion a little bit.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
You say donate to, to plots, though. To whom? Can you clarify that? To the city or to an organization?
An organization. It's my understanding.
Was that tenants to homeowners? Was that was from the, maybe that's for, for staff. Mary, do you happen to recall from the annexation application?
Yeah, and it has, Adam said, he ended working with Rebecca Buford. They hadn't come to an agreement yet, but he was going to, you know, make land available to them, and then they would take care of the affordable housing. And so I had asked them if they wanted to show which lots that were going to be the affordable lots, but he said they're not ready because it's not going to go with the first phase. And so I put that in the staff report, because I thought someone might be interested in knowing, you know, if he was going to designate the lots. But they'll just be in a later phase.
Got it. Good, thank you.
And donating them at cost?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mary, did you say that Randy is here with us this evening to discuss this, the boundary dispute brought by Ms. Dixon?
Yes, this is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you. Can you clarify that issue for us, please?
Yes, basically, before you is a plating issue, and a plating is a ministerial function of the Planning Commission. Basically, that means you don't have any discretion on it. If it meets the city code, it gets the plat. If it doesn't meet the city code, it doesn't get the plat. So the fact that there might be boundary lines in dispute between citizens, I understand that happens. This isn't the first time that's happened. But to the extent that the property and the application meets the city code, they get the plat. And to the extent they don't, they don't get the plat. If the lines change in the future where the boundaries are, then it may have to be replatted. But at this point in time, we just have to go on what the city code says and what the application says.
Thank you.
Just for the benefit of the commission there, because this plat has a variance, we would ask you to hear the variance and vote on it first before the plat.
The biggest question, what Randy said, I guess, for clarity, Jeff or Mary, you can answer this for me. From your perspective, based on its simple outline, if it meets the city code, it gets the plat. Outside of the variance request, from staff's opinion, is there anything about this project that does not meet city code?
Mary will probably jump in and correct me if I'm wrong here, but to my understanding, as we're recommending approval for you, because it does meet that but for the variance request.
Got you. Thank you.
Can I ask Mary a question? Hey, Mary, so seems like the applicant is trying to work with the city on the variance. How did, how did their proposed, their proposal today sound to you? Like, is that, does that sound reasonable?
You know, I haven't seen the graphic, so I don't actually know if all the lots along Quarter Main Court have been reduced. You know, if they were all reduced to 40 feet, I would think the end lots could all be widened to 40 feet. But I wasn't able to see the graphic on the screen, and so I can't really make a statement, you know. That would be up to you. I just stick completely with whether or not I would see it as a necessary hardship. But if you felt that, you know, working and getting the three lots to be the right size, that would be your call.
Just to follow up on that, Mary, when we've dealt with this situation in the past, I believe we've been told that we were, we were judging the information that had been presented and approved by you, not necessarily what was presented at, you know, in real time in the meeting. Does that affect our ability to approve or deny the variance? Are we being called on to approve the variance that's in the packet rather than what's been proposed by the applicant?
I would defer to Jeff on that. I think you could take anything into account, but Jeff could certainly tell you for sure.
Commissioner Carter, if I understand your question, is it, you're being asked to review the variance in the packet or the one that was just presented to you this evening?
Yes.
The one that was just presented has not been reviewed by staff at this point in time, because it was also the first time that we're seeing it, as far as I'm aware. So we can't vouch for, does it meet all the code criteria? Does it have all those standards to it? Is, you know, have all the reviewers taken a look at it? I can't say that, because it's the first time that I'm aware of it myself. So I, you know, you're more welcome to take a look at that, and if you would like to make a approval with a condition, that is a possibility in that respect. However, I cannot say that that does or doesn't meet code, because we haven't had time to put it to the reviewers to find out.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up question on that. If we were to approve a preliminary plat without the variance, they could come back for a variance at another time, or would the variance have to be with the plat?
Well, the variance would have to be considered before the plat, because otherwise you would be approving a plat that is not code compliant, so you wouldn't be able to actually approve the plat without the variance.
Oh, so if we deny the variance, we have to deny the plat?
Correct, because the plat would not be compliant to code.
Okay.
Could we approve the plat with a condition that the, the recommendation on, on remitting the, the variance request was met by the, the city? Met by staff? Did that, would that sentence, did that make any sense? If I...
Change the conditions.
Could you? Yeah, you change the condition to say, would prove the plat with the variance as outlined tonight, assuming future approval by your staff? And if you didn't approve, if you didn't approve that, then the whole thing comes back? I'm not sure how to get to that. It's a mess.
I think Mary was about to chime in there. I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, I think if you were going to do something like that, a deferral, maybe better to defer it, have us, have time to look at the variance and then bring it back with a staff recommendation.
This, this Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. The question would be, you know, the application before you is for a different variance, and they've presented another variance that's really not properly before you at this point in time. So if you want to present that one, then you would probably have to defer it. I don't know whether if you approved the plat with the proposed variance, whether it would meet code or not meet code, so that would all have to be determined. Again, it's a ministerial function, and they have to meet the code, or they don't get it. And if they only meet it with the variance, then we'll have to go at it that way.
Well, just, it says here in the, the staff recommendation for preliminary plat that number three, revise the lots along Quarter Main Court to provide for the required 40-foot frontage. So if we just deny the variance but then accepted the, why couldn't we? So if we just deny the variance, but then accepted the, why couldn't we accept the preliminary plat? Because it says in here that the plot, the lots would be revised.
Correct. That is, you could do that on the condition that they be revised to meet and be code standard.
Okay, we could do that.
So just to check your, my question I asked before.
Right.
We can actually approve the plat tonight and deny the variance.
Correct.
With the conditions provided with staff.
Correct.
Okay.
And that is my apology. I think I confused that with the conditions not in mind there.
That's fine.
Okay, otherwise we would have to defer according to what Randy and Mary were saying.
Right. Okay, because we would not have been able to evaluate that on, honestly, to-
Does he have a path then to come back on the variance request, given the new information that they provided?
Would that be part of the final plat? Is that all administrative?
Final plat is administrative and there are some, some limits within there that can be modified before it does have to come back for a preliminary plat review. And I don't know if that would rise to meet that level or not at this point in time. But final plats are ministerial, or excuse me, are administrative and they are ministerial. So there is some leeway for movement inside the, the plat as the final engineering work is completed. And that can be looked at to see, but there is a threshold in there of when it does exceed that, it does come back for consideration.
So did you want to ask?
Sorry.
Do you want to ask the applicant a question?
I'm not sure. So is that a, so what we're talking about tonight, guys, is, um, we're talking about right now is the path forward to you on this, approving the plat. And the way this is structured, it has to be done with the denial of the variance other than with the condition that's stated in there. Sounds like there's an opportunity to continue to work on that as you move to final plat. Is that an acceptable approach for you? So everybody's happy there?
Okay, I just have a, oh, sorry. This is just a point of clarification for, for me, so I understand. So if we denied the variance, I guess I just don't understand how they could get at something similar to a variance and then, in a, before the final plat, like in, and just administrative stuff, if that makes any sense. Like, if, if they, I can, if they can't, can they come back for a variance is my first question. Can they, if we deny the variance, approve the plat with the condition, can they come back for a variance once they, once they work out with staff what an appropriate variance might look like?
More welcome to always resubmit a preliminary plat and have it go through the review process again if they would like.
So it's a whole new preliminary plat, not just a variance?
Correct.
Okay. So then my next question is, um, if we deny the variance, I guess I don't understand what Gary was just talking about with, excuse me, Commissioner Rettro. With the, the idea of continuing to work on it and getting to something that might be similar to this variance, if that makes any sense. Not this variance necessarily, but how do they work, how does that work?
Typically, when you do a preliminary plat, there's a lot of that preliminary engineering work that you have done and you're, you're going through it. But as you start to move to the final stages, there's more surveying work that is done. So easements may adjust and lines may need to move depending upon what they're finding in real world conditions. And so what the process allows is for variations to occur between the preliminary and the final to be done administrative to allow for that to occur. Sometimes those involve lines being adjusted for any number of reasons. So if that is a case, it can be, be in there. And Mary will tell me when I run this astray here because plating is not my, my forte at this moment, I will tell you. But there are some limitations there. If you start to exceed certain boundaries in the code, then that constitutes it coming back for a re-review by you because it has deviated so far away from that, that it is no longer near your approval plat.
Okay.
So we'll deny it. The conditions of the, of the approval of the plat says that they're going to revise the lots to meet the requirement of 40-foot widths. And they're going to go back, whether it's what they just described or something else. They'll work through that process to final. If they can get there, they get there.
Okay, so it won't really be like the variance that's being requested. There'll just be different things will be moving around.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, Commissioner Carter had it and then Commissioner-
Yeah, I, I, I think this past discussion has probably addressed most of my questions, my, my procedural questions. But I, I, so Mary, um, when you were describing why the frontage needed to be 40 feet, you were saying that was to allow enough room for driveways and street trees. Could you remind me what the regulation is around the provision of street trees along, you know, along a cul-de-sac? Is, is it based on distance between the trees? Or is it based on having a tree on every lot? Can you just remind me what it, what it is?
It's a tree for every lot and it's typically one tree for 40 feet. They're typically divided. Now, sometimes street trees can be clustered if they need to be, but as a rule, it's one tree per lot. And the forestry manager had asked for the graphic because he wasn't sure that on those narrow lots that he'd be able to fit the street trees and the driveways. So he just wanted something to show that, that that would be possible as part of this variance.
Okay, so it's both one tree per lot and every 40, no, no less than every 40 feet?
Right. Now, that could be, the 40 feet can be adjusted sometimes. Sometimes there's easements and other things until street trees are moved a little closer together. We can have, they like them to be very regular. They like that appearance along the street of them being regular. They can be clustered where necessary, but it is one per lot.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I would just say about this particular variance, I'm, I'm actually pretty sympathetic to the applicant on this that, I mean, what, what the applicant has tried to do in real time to present, to, to mostly address this, given the topography of the site. I'm pretty sympathetic to what they're trying to accomplish there. But it sounds like we are not able to offer the condition, for example. Well, here's a question for staff. Would it be possible to change the condition that, you know, number three, to say that, you know, no more than one lot would have a frontage of less than, uh, 40 feet? If not, I'm inclined to just follow staff's recommendation to deny the variance and-
You asked that question, so-
That is a question for, for staff.
Variance, we could get, we could put it all together if we change number three?
No, I'm, I'm asking whether number three, the condition could be changed to no more than one lot have less than the 40-foot frontage.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
See, I don't believe so because you'd end up be kind of reviewing a variance without being in the variance process at that point in time.
Thanks. Okay, I think in, with that in mind, given that the applicant has already come very close to the 40-foot frontage and said that they thought they might be able to find an additional five feet, I'd be inclined for, for the sake of expediting this, to go ahead and deny the variance and, and give them the opportunity to work that out with staff.
Commissioner Javur?
Yeah, my, my questions are about, uh, public comment. So, um, the first concern was water. And, uh, the second, from just walking around the property, it seems that some of the roads that would feed into it are fairly narrow. And I know that the engineer said that this traffic study was accepted. But I just want to know from Mr. Maurer, that the water situation that is described by public comment won't get worse. And then do you guys have any thoughts about the traffic? And have you, will it get, you know, yeah, is that something that you've thought about in your design and?
Well, the, the traffic, we only have a certain streets to connect to. And we only have three of them basically. That's where we started. And one of them was an 80-foot right-of-way on the south side for a larger, wider road, which then goes all the way through our subdivision down, up north toward the school district. If the school district didn't buy that property, we made that loop. So that's why that was done that way. So that, that was done years ago as part of the, you know, the traffic overall plan. The, the other streets are to city standards, which are 27-foot wide. So, um, they weren't widened to 31-foot, not the rest of them are. So hopefully all that traffic goes to 31-foot, which they probably will because that's also up the hill. And then you get to Bonner Way and Peterson, which is where you want to go. I personally wouldn't drive east through all that residential and all the duplex lots over there. You're just adding for, you know, so you're, it is only going north, I mean, goes south from our property, I would think.
As far as the water is concerned?
Water is concerned, it's a hillside. We will try to, you know.
Well, if there's, if there are problems today, uh, like, will they get worse? In, in your opinion, I mean, like, will things get-
It shouldn't get worse. Like I said, we're cutting the water off. Okay. You know, just west of there, it's going to go to a street.
Okay.
If it is coming from the west onto their property, we've cut that water off and we'll pick that up.
But potentially it could get better.
It could be a pattern, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yes.
Yes, uh, I would like to go back to the variance and, um, I just have a question. So looking at the size of this, uh, plat and the amount of homes that they're trying to build, I'm looking at four lots that are about eight feet short from being compliant. Can at least someone tell me what would be the ramifications of if the variance gets approved of this lot being eight feet shorter from, uh, the code for being compliant? What ramifications this can bring? What issues could this have if it gets approved? Aside from not being compliant with the code, what other reasons are stopping us from approving this?
Are you asking staff or the applicant or?
Anyone who could answer the question will be okay with that.
Without the, uh, the graphic showing how the driveways and the street trees could all be accommodated, it's very likely we could have just a very large paved area between two lots at least, um, which wouldn't have the appearance. If you've ever been at a cul-de-sac, some of them have, it looks just like a parking lot at a cul-de-sac. And so that was why we requested the graphic to show that the narrow lots could accommodate the driveways and the street trees. So I can't tell you that they do or that they don't, since we don't have that graphic, but that would be the concern.
Okay.
Typically, you also will run into situations where you get in those where driveway start to conflict with fire hydrants or stormwater inlets or some of that hard infrastructure that has to be in place there. And that can kind of mitigate, or excuse me, kind of start maneuvering around because you don't have that space for that in there. So there is some leeway in those standards, you know, like we were talking about how street trees sometimes move over. It's typically because there's a stormwater inlet or a fire hydrant that's in the way. So the tree just kind of shifts five feet to get clear of the hydrant or more, more than five feet typically. But usually that standard is to kind of make sure there's enough space for both the hard infrastructure, the driveways and all the other required elements to be in place.
Commissioner Munch?
Yeah, thank you. I guess while we're on the, on the variance, just a, a general comment or reminder. If I've learned anything that Commissioner Carpenter's knee the last several months, it's that when we're considering a variance, but have this right, we're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. And in that capacity, we're kind of limited in, in what we're able to consider. A couple of different factors. The first, perhaps the most prominent, which, and, and this is addressed in the staff report, is whether or not strict application of the code would create an unnecessary hardship. And in making that determination, I, I don't believe that we can find that cost or inability to maximize profit from a development in itself creates a hardship. And instead, we'd have to think about whether, uh, strict adherence to the code would deprive the property owner of their rights to use the property. And based on what I've heard tonight and what I've seen in the staff report, I'm not sure that we have that here. You know, whether it's four lots or five, developer would still be able to use that property. They wouldn't be deprived of that right. I don't believe we've heard that there's an unnecessary hardship.
Further comments?
That would have been my argument. I, I do have a question. I mean, this is outside the variance and this is outside of approving what's before us. But this was zoned RS5. And when I'm looking at this, it looks like a majority, well, maybe not, but an awful lot of these are 7,000 square feet and above. We go all the way up to almost 21,000 square feet for one of these lots, or two of these lots. And I, I have to wonder, I'm sure this has to do with the topography. I mean, if the applicant come up and just explain how we ended up with some of these giant lots and instead of, um, having roadways that work for smaller lots that would be more compatible with what RS5 is intended.
Yeah, so the, a big challenge on this one was the gas easement. And so the gas easement actually becomes a part of the lot. And when you're doing the design, you know, you don't want to build roads everywhere. So some of those lots get bigger because they have to be deeper. And then with the 40-foot requirement on the cul-de-sacs and the arc length in the front, those pie-shaped lots get awfully big too. And so that's what happened. A lot of the bigger lots you're seeing either have an easement that's a part of it or have that 40-foot frontage in a cul-de-sac and have an awfully large pie shape.
Yeah, I appreciate the difficulties in making all these things work together. And the only reason I'm bringing it up, I mean, we can't require the change in any of this on the, as part of our consideration of the preliminary plat. This is just with the hope that the city commission actually is watching this or will watch this. And this is something that the Planning Commission has been talking about for a couple of years, that RS5 doesn't necessarily mean 5,000 square foot. It's anywhere between 5,000 and 7,000 square foot before you have to go up to RS7. We, we actually have lots in here that could be called RS20, which is about our largest. So, um, you know, this is something, I'm, I'm pointing this out because this is something that has to be considered when we update, uh, the land development code, how to address this issue. Because we have no upward, um, limit on what lots can be when we call it RS5. And it's easy to say we're going to have increase the density of our housing, increase our housing stock by calling it RS5. And then we end up with less than what we actually think it's going to be when we first approve it. And I'm not blaming you for that. I understand what the topography is here. I know exactly how this works. Everything you have here, except for your variance request meets what the code requirements are. And, um, you know, so I, I'm going to, I, well, I'm going to not recommend approval. Well, actually, I'm going to reckon, we're going to, I'm going to vote to deny the variance and, um, probably go forward with recommending approval of the plat with the conditions that are recommended by staff, which would address that issue. So you can bring the plat into conformance with the code without having to go through the whole process again.
I, I will say you can blame me for the variance debacle because after doing what I did today, the variance, instead of asking for 31 feet instead of 40, we could have asked for 39 feet instead of 40. And it probably would have been received a little better because we're just talking about a foot.
I don't know if you would have met undue hardship. I mean, that's the, that's the tough one to always get over and that's not us. That's the state statute and court interpretation that we can't get passed on that one.
Got you.
But I appreciate all the efforts that you've made. And I appreciate the difficulties in trying to use some of these lands that haven't already come into the city. Because this is what we have now in tier two, is we have some real challenges out there. And sometimes we're making, bringing up those issues here and having some votes to call that to the attention of the city commission, not to try to just be obstructionist, um, as some have argued, uh, but to bring some issues to the forefront so they can be seriously discussed. So I, I, I'm just want to bring that up as an example. Our zoning categories now under the code don't necessarily mean what you might think they mean until we know what can be actually done with that piece of land. So I just wanted that warning out there for everyone. So thank you.
May I ask a question? Are, are we recommended to vote on the variance before continuing with the discussion?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Well, we'll do the variance first.
Yeah.
Um, if people are ready to, um, give a motion on that, on the variance. Commissioner Rettro?
I can try. Um, I think what we've talked about is denying a variance request. But we get the wording of this right, I'd recommend that we deny the variance request from section 20 dash, um, 8101A2I of the subdivision regulations, um, as stated in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, any further discussion on the variance? No, could you call the vote, Jeff, please?
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Baroto?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Duvar?
No.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso?
Yes.
Commissioner Munch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroad?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to one.
Thank you. Now we're moving to the preliminary plat.
Any further discussion on the preliminary plat before I ask for motion?
I have a question. So as part of, well, let's see. The consultation with the city engineer preceded the redrawing of the proposed street alignments. Can you tell me whether the city engineer just accounted for drainage or also for geological stability?
I will have to defer to Mary on that one for the detail.
Yeah, the preliminary plat came in designed the way you see it today. And so that was referred to the city engineer. First, I commented that I thought the streets should be redrawn to make them more grid like as in the concept plan. And the applicant indicated it wasn't possible. So I asked him to provide justification, which he did. And that was forwarded to the city engineer. And he looked at it over and said, yes, he agreed with that based on topography. So his analysis was on the street layout.
Got it, thank you. I guess my follow up question would be in development of the final plat, will there be consideration in laying out those those westernmost or those easternmost plots? Will geological stability be considered part of that? Because I think based on the neighbors' comments, my biggest concern is that that hillside does not appear to be particularly stable and that you've got, and I know, you know, the applicant has explained the economics of it all. But I'm concerned that somebody could be potentially buying land that is not going to stay in one place.
That is not typically something that comes in with the plating documents. That's typically something that comes in with the building permits for the structures to understand how the footings and the foundations will lay down and connect and do those details. So probably be more in line with the building permits than it would be for the plating process. It's not uncommon. We do see residential developments that come in with some of those reports and soil studies to make sure that it does have that stability and footing. And those are reviewed by engineers and signed and stamped.
Okay, but but it would still be conceivable that somebody would end up buying a legally defined plot of land and then finding that may not be able to build on it.
That may be the case. That certainly is a possibility, I'd agree.
That answers my question.
Any other comments? No, I'd entertain a motion. Commissioner Duvar?
Approve the preliminary plat PP dash 22 dash 00402 Hunter's Hill subdivision based on the findings in the staff report and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Baroto. Any further discussion? Could you call the vote, Jeff?
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Baroto?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
No.
Commissioner Duvar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso?
Yes.
Commissioner Munch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroad?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to one.
Thank you, and thank you for coming this evening. We are moving on to item number three now. Consider a request to rezone approximately 2.02 acres located at 1749 East 1500 Road from Ag 2 to Light Industrial. Mary Miller is again our staff member giving the report.
Mary, if you're talking, you may be on mute.
Sorry. I should go over that again. As you mentioned, this is a rezoning request. It's for about two acres. It's rezoning request is from the Ag 2 Light Industrial to the Light Industrial District. So about a little less than a half an acre is actually zoned Ag 2. But just to simplify this and not require a lot of surveys to find out exactly what piece of this property is zoned Ag 2, we're going through the steps of rezoning it from Light Industrial and Ag 2 to Light Industrial. The subject property is located right along Interstate 70. It's west of East 1500 Road. It's a small parcel here and it is at the very northern edge of tier two of the urban growth area. This shows the split zoning of the property. This property in purple and the Ag 2, they were zoned with the adoption of zoning for the unincorporated portion of the county in 1966. And if you look at the property itself to the right, you can see there is no zoning. This is right of way for the I-70 turnpike. However, they use less right of way in this location and then on to the west. And where they didn't need so much right of way, the agricultural zoning remains, which means that these parcels all have split zoning. They have two different zoning districts on one property. And while this is not prohibited by code, it is inconvenient and inefficient. Different setbacks apply to different parts of the property and different uses are permitted on different parts of the property. The proposed use, the applicant would like to install a warehouse building to use with his pool installation business. It could be installed on another part of the property that is currently zoned LI, but he would like to put it to the north of the existing residence. And this requires that rezoning to be able to do that. This is just a rough idea of where the zoning boundary is. And this is concept plan on the right showing where that warehouse would be placed by the outbuilding. Now, the actual development, as we saw with the plat, it may vary. This is designed based on engineering than when the site plan is submitted. But this is what they're proposing. The property is currently developed with a residence. A residence is no longer a permitted use in the industrial district. And so this is a non-conforming use and it is allowed to remain. It is also allowed to rebuild per the provisions in the zoning regulations. It's also located within the setbacks for the Light Industrial District, which makes it a non-conforming structure, which can also remain and can be rebuilt according to the provisions in the zoning regulations. This rezoning would have no impact on this structure since it's already in the Light Industrial District. And so this shows the setbacks for the various districts. We're showing the zoning here. We have industrial in purple, Ag 2 in tan. There's always a 40 foot base setback. And from that point, we measure the front setback. And for the Ag 2, we have a 100 foot front setback. For Light Industrial, we have a 50 foot front setback. And for the exterior side, it's 100 foot for the Ag 2 and 50 foot for the Light Industrial. And so this area is what's available for a building area in with the current zoning. And with this, we have a larger area available for construction. So the rezoning to the Light Industrial District would apply uniform setbacks and use requirements over the lot. So I'll go through some of the review criteria. One thing we look at is whether the zoning and proposed land use would be compatible with zoning and land uses in the nearby area. And as I mentioned, we do have the two zoning districts on the subject property. It's also within the airspace overlay district. This is in the approach zone, which sets maximum height limits for development on this property. The maximum height permitted in the Light Industrial is 45 feet. And I'm going through the dimensions provided in the zoning regulations. It looks like the maximum that would be allowed for those uses that are exempt from the height restrictions, such as towers and elevators, steeles, whatever you would have, would be 98 feet. However, any site plan for this property that was submitted would need to be, it would be provided to the airport advisory board. So they could review it for compliance with the standards in the ASO district. But the the height, maximum height that's allowed in this district would be allowed in that overlay district. And the graphic on the right. It just shows the subject property. And then we look at the character of the area. Typically, when they look at this, in the unincorporated portion of the area, we try to look at about a mile in all directions of the subject property. But Interstate 70 being so wide and such an intense highway, it's not expected that any development on this lot would impact the character of the property to the north of Interstate 70. So we use that as a northern boundary. And then the boundary to the west and the south is less than one mile because we get into the city of Lawrence. And so we don't go quite a mile in those directions, but we are looking at a mile to the east. So within this area, we have a mix of uses. In the unincorporated portion, it's primarily agricultural and residential. And then within the city of Lawrence, we have residential primarily to the south and a mix of commercial, industrial and community facilities to the west. While this property is zoned industrial, it has not been developed with industrial uses. There's a few to the south, there's a few industrial nature uses. And so this would be one of the first industrial uses in this immediate area. So there would be some steps needed to make it compatible with the character of the area and with nearby properties. And we would recommend some buffering along the street, some the roadway along with some trees. There is a residence across the street to remove any visual impacts. With site plans for the property, we would look at the traffic that would be coming and lighting, if any lighting was proposed, so that we can mitigate those impacts on nearby properties. So with proper site plan review, the future use should be compatible with both the nearby land uses and the character of the area. We look at the compliance with the recommendations in the area plan. And this is within the boundaries of the northeast area plan. And that includes recommendations, future land use recommendations for when the property is annexed into the city. When it's annexed into the city, it recommends low intensity or low density residential. Then it includes this statement. There are a number of properties in the planning area that have existing county zoning designations other than agricultural zoning. Some of these properties are shown on the future land use map that have a different future land use through possible future urbanization. Properties with zoning other than agricultural that seek to develop for permitted use may do so without oversight of the future land use map of this plan, as long as they receive the appropriate approvals to do so. So while the proposed use is not recommended in the future land use map, the plan anticipated a disconnect between the recommended urban uses and uses which would be appropriate outside the city limits. The proposed land use is permitted on the subject property, except for the northern 0.4 acres. And as the agricultural zoning on the northern side of the property results from land divisions for the I-70 right of way and was not an intentional zoning, the applicant's request to rezone the property to provide one uniform zoning district would be sound planning. And then we look at the recommendations in the comprehensive plan. And we do have the one that we look at under natural resources, where the comprehensive plan recommends to protect continuous amounts of agricultural land and we protect high quality agricultural soils. This nearly half acre on this property does have class one soils. However, given the very small size, it would not be reasonable to do to protect that for agriculture purposes. And so that class one soil would be utilized in this project. In addition, the property itself is pretty well fragmented with the house, the outbuilding and the driveway. And so technically it is not suitable for agricultural uses. And then there's a growth management. We have the recommendations to minimize the conversion of agricultural land to non-agricultural uses. In this case, the land is residential and it is zoned for agricultural uses and is part of a parcel that's also zoned for industrial uses. And to maintain working lands and agricultural soils for future generations. That would be the same comment as before. That is such a small parcel that it's, it wouldn't actually be a feasible working agricultural property. And action step 3.4 requires rural developments in tiers two and three to agree not to protest future annexation. And so that would be a requirement with future development with the site plan requirements would be that they execute consent to annex and an annexation agreement. We look at the other review criteria. The property is not well suited for agricultural uses due to its small size. This portion of the property, the zone Ag 2, has never been developed, but the parcel overall was developed prior to 1966. I believe the house was built in 1960. Potential detrimental impacts of rezoning would be increased traffic. It is on a collector roadway, so that road expects traffic. But we would want to review the amount of traffic that would occur. But with the site plan, we would want buffering from nearby properties. We would look at lighting impacts. And so one of the important portions of the site plan review in the county is being harmonious and having harmonious development with nearby properties. And so additional measures are able to be implemented for that. And impact environmentally sensitive land, as I noted, it will be utilizing prime farmland. However, it's most of that land is already zoned for industrial use. And so staff is recommending that the rezoning be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval based on the findings, the fact and the report. And that concludes my presentation, and I believe the applicant is present tonight.
Thank you, Mary. Would Dean Grobe like to address? Present, please. Is the applicant present online?
Yes, I am.
There you. Go ahead, please.
I don't think I really need to add anything. We're just wanting to develop that property and that agricultural zoning really limits what we can do. We want to preserve a building that's on there already. And we'll do that unless we can get the zoning all changed to what we need to.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go over to public comment. Go ahead and approach the podium and state your name and.
I'm Marvin Pine. My wife Kathy and I own the property that is in question. We, our property, which is a combination of a side yard with trees and orchard and grass, not paving oil over that soil. So it will drain in and not accumulate. Now, also my property comes around and I'm hooked right up to his backyard. That is the property that wants to be rezoned. I don't know, two or three years ago, I think it was Clay Heine bought that property. And he, he fixed up that house, restored it really nice, did a nice job. But he also brought in truckload after truckload of field soil. And so consequently, since then, if we get any kind of rain at all, I'm flooded. And I mean literally up to an acre on the my north side, which is yard and orchard and trees and garden. We've lost a lot of crops. I asked him to put that little swag in there so it wouldn't all drain on my side. And oh yeah, he was going to do that, but it hasn't happened. So I'm concerned about even worse flooding problems, especially with a large building, you know, and concrete. I think everybody in that area is worried about that. The other thing, I have a entrance right up real close to his south side of his property, a drive, so I can get like a combine or this heavy equipment back. We have a 10 acre field right there, grow crops. And previously, when they were working on that. Oh, I've got two minutes, I'm about done. Previously, we had workers and come in on our drive. Because it could get confusing without some kind of fence or to delineate my drive, which is here, and then the property over here. It was real nice to come in and just go right through our place and go around and go in, I guess. So I got a problem with unauthorized vehicles, might have a problem driving into my driveway. And I see, I think I've got a lot of concerns here. Yeah, I am concerned that if it's going to have big trucks, big equipment. I do have a visual concern. It's my next door neighbor and that whole area is a neighborhood. And the rest of the ground is the best soil there is. We already talked about that.
Thank you, Mr. Pine.
We're growing crops, we're growing gardens, we've got pasture, we've got grassland. And we're growing crops, we're growing gardens, we've got pasture, we've got grassland, we've got trees.
Thank you, Mr. Pine.
I'd like to keep it, yeah, like, oh, whoa, yeah, I'm over.
Thank you.
I'd like to keep it a neighborhood and not some industrial park.
Thank you. Other public comment?
I'll take the risk of removing this so you can hear me better. I'm Natalia Louter. I own 12 acres approximately about a quarter of a mile, my north end is about a quarter of a mile south of the subject property. I have a lot of concerns with this. It does not make sense to rezon move this land contrary to the northeast sector plan if the industrial development of the parcel is not even feasible, and I don't believe this project is. I hope you all read in detail the letter that I sent regarding sanitation issues. First, I think the planning commission and the county need to make a careful legal review of whether it is legal to add a conforming land use to a parcel that already has a use that happens to be non-conforming, where that use has existed since before the zoning, especially when the two uses are not allowed on the same parcel regardless of zoning. I strongly encourage the planning commission to defer this matter until a review and determination can be made at a policy level, not just for this parcel. It's an issue that's likely to come up again, and there've been similar situations in the past that have been allowed to add an industrial use to a residential lot. If there is a policy decision that one parcel can have two mutually exclusive uses, then I question whether the additional use can be added to a lot that is so undersized for the sanitation codes. Each of these uses should have its own five-acre lot under our sanitation codes to have a septic and a well. And I would hope, I mean, another question is, does this new use have to have its own septic? And at any rate, as a non-residential use, it has to have not just one septic system, but it also has to have a secondary drainage field set aside. So you're putting a lot of stuff on a very undersized lot, two uses, basically three septic systems, one or two wells, or we're going to have groundwater contamination. And then Cod Drainage District has grave concerns about all the impermeable surfaces and wants a stormwater detention pond. I couldn't find any information about the setbacks between a lateral field and a stormwater detention pond, but it's got to be something. Without the stormwater detention, this project will increase flooding, not just on his property, but on mine. Mine is the property that Maple Grove backs up onto when the pump station is overwhelmed. And a couple of years ago, that happened three times in one year, I had floodwater on my north pasture. I don't need more.
Thank you, Ms. Arthur. Is there any additional public comment on this item? If not, I'll ask the applicant if you'd like to respond.
I don't really have anything to say. We've got to go through the planning, or the planning process, or not the, excuse me, we've got to do site plans after that, so we've got to deal with the septic and, and that start, that type of thing afterwards. I don't know that that has anything to do with the zoning, but, so I, you know, I was unaware that Mr. Pine was against us doing anything over there. It's industrial ground, there's a, there's a big buffer between us and his house. So, and, you know, as far as his driveway concerns, there'll probably end up being a fence in between there that will, we, we've got a big driveway. I don't anticipate we'll be using that other entrance over there, but...
Yeah, that so-called big buffer happens to be into my front yard.
Sir, if there's a question, we'll bring you back up, okay? Thank you. Okay, if there's no further comment from the applicant, then I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Point of clarification for Mary. Mary, regarding the drainage and the concerns of Mr. Pine, given that this is the zoning phase, I mean, that really won't come into, that's not something we even would consider at this point, right? I mean, that's not...
Yeah, right. It's not a part of the zoning. And I want to apologize, I meant to mention that the Drainage District had sent me an email expressing concerns with drainage, and they said with any impervious surface, they did want to see stormwater detention, some sort of stormwater management. And I relayed that on to engineer Dean Grobe that's working with the applicant. So with the site plan, there would be, stormwater would be reviewed. The site plan would go to the Drainage District and also to the county engineer for review, but that would happen at that stage.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Munch.
Yeah, follow-up from Mary. So to clarify, the septic considerations would also be accounted for when doing the site plan?
Yes, I don't know if this warehouse is going to have a restroom. If it does have a restroom, it would need its own septic system, and that would be the health department's call. So it, like I said, they may not be able to build what they want to build on it. They may be able to put in something smaller. They may be required to put in a warehouse that doesn't have a restroom, you know, and the health department would be making those calls.
I guess I have a question about the northeast sector plan, which calls for this area when annexed to be residential. And I know you read the, the line about if, given the proper approvals, it could be industrial. But I am a little bit concerned that the northeast sector plan had, had been asking for this area to be residential. So what does that do when this, when and if this parcel is annexed into the city of Lawrence, now then we have an industrial use in where the rest of it would be supposedly zoned for residential?
There's a little bit of two aspects that go into that plan. And then the first one is it acknowledges the zoning that was in place at that point in time, which was the industrial zoning previous to the, the district we have now by name. It had a different name at that point because we changed codes. But it acknowledges that that industrial zoning is there and they have the ability to use it in that sense. It also makes the comment about upon urbanization, then it would go through the process and come in that line. So it also foresaw a future of that use may want to cease existing and then change over, which is something you do see commonly kind of in edge situations like that. So it, it does recognize that there is that industrial use and has been out there, that zoning for some time, and it does anticipate a development pattern. But as you all know, sometimes those patterns will change over time, and sometimes they may linger on for quite a while. That's, that's a facet of the plan that it does kind of just look at and, and assess at that point. And I will also admit it, it's also one of the few plans that has language like that that we have among the specific land use plans that go around the city of Lawrence and in Douglas County.
Just on that point, I pulled up a map, I'm looking at the area surrounding that and, and it's, it all seems to be industrial to the east, to the west, to the west. North is the airport. If that's, if that's designed in this whole area to become residential, it must be towards the east of where that current industrial is. It's just, the rest of it's ag all around that.
Kind of in the same vein, I, I was just kind of curious about the surrounding soils. When I look, it looks like that ag that is in there is also prime class one soils. And so when we're looking at the character of the neighbor, I mean, actually almost one through nine, when I'm looking at those, I have a high concern for the effect that it will have on the prime soils and on the ability for sustainability, local food, et cetera. So I was just curious whether or not I'm correct when I'm looking at that overlay and that the ag land that is there that we're talking about, it are mostly class one soils. Not just the parcel that, that would be changing, right? But the character of the neighborhood includes a lot of, a lot of class one soils. Is that, is that correct, Mary? Or am I, am I looking at the map correctly?
I'm not sure what map you're looking at, but yes, you're right, probably that environmental, environmental graphic. There is a lot of class one soils in the whole northeast sector area. And for that reason, they don't really, they're not really promoting that it be annexed into the city, you know? And I think that's why they made that provision that they could be used for whatever they're zoned for prior to being annexed. So I don't know if this rezoning, this northern portion of this parcel would affect the class one soils on other properties. You know, I think the other properties could maintain their characteristics.
I just hear Mr. Pine saying that, you know, he's already got flooding from not having the soils collecting the water and the drain, the drainage. And so I'm just curious as what, as to what that does with the surrounding ag land. So, thank you.
Maybe to that point, some question for me that I, that I have. Talk, think about drainage and the impact that additional building might have for Mary or Jeff. What, what steps will this applicant need to go through should they get the zoning that they want before they can build or as part of the building process to consider the concerns about draining as long, as well as the considerations on, so I think Mary already answered that, but will there be study done? Will there, what are the requirements that assures the neighbors aren't impacted?
Right. In the zoning regulations, there isn't a requirement to have drainage studies like we have in the development code. But when there's issues identified, you know, when they're brought to the attention by the Drainage District did, then we can require drainage studies. So there will be a drainage study provided when they do the site plan. That way, the county engineer can determine what kind of stormwater detention is necessary and a drainage district. So they should put measures in, and with the site plan, we'll get comments from neighbors. So if there's a swell that would address the issues for the neighboring property, Mr. Pine, then that could be part of the stormwater management measures. So, you know, usually with projects like this, stormwater drainage is approved for neighboring properties due to the type of measures that are put in.
I guess that's what I was wondering, if there's a, if it's a probability that things would actually get better than what it is today. All right, thank you, Mary.
And just for the reminder for the commission, is site plans in the county do go to the county commission, they do not come before you.
Mary, Mr. Pine talked about lots of fill having been brought into that area. What are the county regulations about fill?
We don't really have regulations if someone wants to add soil to their land. The county has regulations about landfills if you excavate. We do have, and I don't know when it happened, you know? I know if you're doing a landfill and you're going to pile dirt on your property, that could be considered a landfill. But that was a text amendment just a few years ago. And so I think maybe this fill happened before that amendment went through. And, and before then, there were no regulations. If a person wanted to put dirt on their land, they could.
Right. Well, it certainly does have an impact. It changes the character of the soil underneath, and it raises it and causes more runoff. It's not in the county code now. I hope it will be addressed because it's going to become more of an issue as the city starts to move in certain directions. But I have to say, made the comment, the city is, is not showing any indication of going straight east, and Udora is certainly showing no indication of coming west into that same area because of what those soils are. Because every time we hear the city talk, it's southeast, west, or, or southwest. So, yeah, I was just curious about the fill issue, but thank you.
If I may, Mary, I have a very, very quick question about the distance of the property to the end of the nearest runway. On page 58 of the packet, and you have that marked as like 2,100 feet, but I think that's from a property north of I-70. I think when I look at it to the actual property, it's closer to 4,000 feet. You see the, on, on page, I guess it's page seven of the, of the report, the lower right-hand figure, figure 3E. Do you see what I'm talking about? That appears to be north of Pine's, something, I guess, the Heinen Outdoor Power Equipment property?
Sorry, I forgot how to mute myself. Yes, I was looking at the end of the nearest instrument approach only airstrip. So I think that is the airstrip, and this is just estimated. So, yeah, we're not looking at the airport, but in my graphic, when I looked at the airport master plan, that looked like the end of the non-instrument approach airstrip, which is where we would measure the distance from.
Right. I'm not, I'm not disputing the airstrip, I'm disputing the property that you're measuring the distance to.
Okay, let me look at that again. I'm going to pull that up so I can see.
That seems to be the property at the corner of East 1500 Road and, what would that be? North 1800 Road.
You're right. Yes, you're right. I did, I did draw that to another small parcel in the corner, but it's the wrong parcel. So I apologize for that, yeah. I should have noticed that.
Does that distant difference of 2,100 feet to 4,000 feet make any difference on your determination?
No.
I mean, it's actually farther away, right?
Yeah, if it's further away, then it could be much taller. So the, if they had, if they wanted to put a communication tower there, it could be a lot taller than the 98 feet I noted. But regardless of that, it would still have to go to the airport advisory board. And I'm sorry, I did that just to provide an example, and I did not know I used the wrong parcel, so.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
I have a, a, a quick question. I'm, I'm concerned about the flooding, but understand that that might be a consideration for the next step in this besides the, the rezoning. But I'm hung up on the northeast area plan. How old is that plan again? Can you remind us? 2012, I've heard. Let me see. Mary, can you confirm how, when the northeast area?
I don't have my computer up where I can see that. I know it was one of our more recent plans that we've done, but I think we can get that in just a moment. Let me...
Thank you. I, I guess my concern is just that it's, the north, depending on how recent this is, that, that north has a recommendation for that for to be residential area, and I'm concerned about adding to the light, the industrial nature of the area if plans are to make that residential.
So the northeast area plan was first adopted in 2003 and was amended in 2015.
2015. Okay, well, that's, I guess that's where my hangup is, is on the northeast area plan.
Do I recall that the one trying to put this whole thing into one configuration so it didn't have two different determinations on this property, but the individual could still build if they went west of the property? They wanted to build north is, when I initially looked at this, I thought, well, that just makes sense. I-70 came through, wiped it out, there was agriculture there, and now there's this little sliver there. And I thought, well, that is a, a no-brainer. The thing that is going to be built will not, if we didn't change the zoning regulation, would it encroach into what is now the ag area?
The use would not be allowed in the Ag 2 zoning, so it would, it would have to be kept on the L-I zoned portion. on the LI zoned portion.
I guess.
It makes sense to have a property with one zoning determination on it. Will, and again, I guess I, I've got to say downstream, this is going to be looked at. Clay came in and dumped huge amounts of soil on that property and it has caused drainage issues for you and Miss Louder. I don't know if the, what clay put on there is what's causing, but there are flooding issues in that area. Mary says that will be looked at and addressed. If, if we change this zoning, so it's all one zone, that would be looked at and you would have an opportunity to come back and address those concerns. As far as whether he would have to put another septic in it, we don't have any control over that right now. That's still going to be county zoning to look at. Again, on first blush, it just made sense to change it all to one zoning, but there are things that two of you have brought up that I think are going to have to be addressed ultimately when a determination is made about building another building.
I guess to that point, Commissioner Thomas, that it, it does seem that it's, even though I'm hung up on the Northeast Area Plan, it is, it is own light industrial right now. And he can put the building there as light industrial right now, just that, just in a different section of it. So, yeah.
So he can build west.
Yeah.
He could build west and just didn't want to.
So if my concern is that there's an industrial use there, it's, they can still do that. Yeah.
And what's there anyway is residents is a non-conforming where it is for two reasons. It is, and it, it's going to be grand, it is grandfathered in no matter what we do.
Mr. Hayden, did you have a question? Carry that face around.
Just for a point of clarification, again, following up on Commissioner Thomas's question, if this rezoning request were denied and the applicant decided he wanted to build on the west side of his parcel instead of the north side, question for staff, what steps would need to be followed? Would still go through a site plan review?
Correct.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, so the applicant is wanting to build, wanting to build this warehouse, whether he builds it to the west or to the north, west closer to his neighbors or to the north farther away from his neighbors, he wants to build this warehouse.
Yes.
I'm, I am somewhat reluctantly inclined to recommend approval based on that. And the site, you know, the, the fact that this will still have to go through site plan review regardless, and the drainage issues that the, that the neighbors are concerned about, you know, justifiably concerned about, would be, would be addressed at that point. But I, I see that one of the neighbors does have a question, but I think it's up to.
And it changes the setbacks from it's ag 100 feet to 50 feet on the setbacks that would be on the north and the west. So.
Just a thought, I just piling on to last two commissioners' comments. I'm inclined to support this. I'm not insensitive to the value of the ag two land and everything we can do to, to save every bit of that, I think is appropriate. This is though largely already zone industrial, refusing to, and the ag two that is there is, I think I understood as an artifact of how the highway right of way was left, this odd piece that in otherwise without that might have, we might even be in front of us because it would all been taken care of at one time. There's a chance through this that probably doesn't exist in any other way to get at the problems that the neighbors are experiencing today, which isn't nothing. And, and, and refusing to do it, you know, refusing to move this into just one zoning class, which has its own benefit, refusing to do it doesn't prevent the building from being built anyway. It might even actually push it into a less desirable location that doesn't provide the other benefits. I'm inclined to support.
And since I have specifically named Mr. Pine and Ms. Louder, I would say if they have something, since I specifically named it, if they have something to say, can they do that?
Yes, if you would like to ask them a question, if you'd like to ask them a question.
As, if this, of course, I would prefer that it be, you know, changed to residential agriculture. But if that's not possible, and I don't think it is, if I, we have to live with industrial there as next door neighbors, I would prefer that anything built can be as far north as it can be as opposed to now the west side. See, my, my cropland is going to butt right into the west side. And, you know, I've got a little trail to get my tractors through and all, but that's about it. And then my, my side yard and orchard butts up against his south side. So if it comes that direction, it'll be actually closer and maybe more even of a water problem than if it get it as far away to the north. So any questions on that, what I'm trying to say?
No, I, I appreciate your response.
Yeah.
But that would enable the individual to build north rather than west, and they're going to build.
Yeah, that'll be the furthest away, I think, as I've seen some of the plans away from my property to less effect on the, on the soil and the crops that we grow.
Thank you, Mr. Pine.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Ms. Louder.
Do you have a question for Ms. Louder?
Yes. Would you like to respond to anything that was said?
Um, I want to reiterate from my previous, my letter, the value of even a small parcel of class one soil. Strawberry crop, 25% to 20% destroyed by flooding in California. Before that happened, there was a potential for $20,000 an acre on strawberries. So you can't say that a small park isn't of value. It's profitable. I also really cannot emphasize enough my concern over whether it is even legal to put two different uses on one parcel when that parcel is so undersized for the sanitation. And the sanitation code says a minimum of five acres for one use with a well and a septic. And you're talking about putting two different uses on one parcel.
And I think, and I believe those concerns will be addressed when anything is built, proposed to be built. So, and those concerns are noted. One, the water people already have expressed their concern and we have noted it now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Louder. Other.
Can I just add to that? You know, what Mary explained is when we get a proposal for a building, the county health department is going to be the ones in complete control as to what can and can't go in as far as sanitation. So that's going to be under their code at the time. And if it's impossible to do, there won't be a building permit. So I think we're back to what's in front of us right now is not the building so much as are we going to
Rezone.
Rezone this so we have one zoning for this parcel. And I don't know how we ended up with so much industrial over farmland out there, but I think it was high hopes back in the early 2000s that we were going to grow a bunch of industrial parks. But, but right now we have an awful lot of ag land that's zoned, it's light industrial out there. But that doesn't mean that's what it's going to stay. As soon as something's more profitable, we're going to see a zoning request to change it to whatever's more profitable. And I don't know how it's, I guess it's just being taxed as ag land because that's a use. So.
There is a lot of.
It's not taxed by what the zoning is.
Correct. It is not taxed by the zoning. It's, it's based upon what the use of the property is at that point in time. And just out of, because you all know me and I know maps a little bit there, the property goes all the way back to 1966 as being zoned industrials from what I can tell.
Well, that was high hopes. So. Anyway, I, I think just, you know, what's before is just for the rezoning to make this parcel one zoning category. It doesn't fix the non-conforming uses. It doesn't, it doesn't say that you can build a building unless you pass all the other code requirements from the water district and the health department and everyone else. And anything, anything that triggers a site plan is going to require looking at the water drainage and remedying some of those issues. So I don't, I don't, I don't see a big problem. I think it's very interesting that we do have that language in that one area plan that permits this. So, but we can do it. We're not, we don't have to amend the area plan to do it, which would be another whole discussion. So I think, I think what's in front of us is pretty simple and straightforward. And I'm inclined to approve, vote to recommend approval of the rezoning. I do have concerns and I think we've raised all of those and everybody's going to hear about that from Mary at least, when it goes on to the next step, that the planning commission had concerns about drainage and septic and everything else we've talked about. So, see what other people have to say.
This is, yes, yes. Mr. Hayden, um, no, I think I really struggle with this because I, I don't, even though it's a small parcel, I don't like the idea of taking it out of ag land. I mean, I agree that small parcels of class one soils can be incredibly valuable. I don't know the future of, of what we'll, we'll need for, for local food. However, after hearing Mr. Pine, I'm now more confused because it does sound like this might actually be the better use to help continue the surrounding character of the neighborhood of, of ag with ag use versus what it would be allowed without this, which would be to, to build the building on the property that's light industrial. So I'm leaning towards voting in favor of it for that reason. I, I don't know if I misunderstand something. I'm less concerned that it's currently has and that I would just say, oh, well, then let's make it all industrial. And if, if that's the, the theory, I'd be like, let's make it all ag. I mean, that, to me, that just isn't something I find. So I'm not sure if I'm missing the nuance there. But, but I think I am inclined to support it despite, despite the class one soil, just from, from hearing from the neighbors. As am I on that point, to put the building to the north is less intrusive, I guess. So.
Well, I don't think you're missing a nuance. I think as Mary explained, this is an artifact of the interstate and, and it's been improperly categorized ever since then, which puts it back in the 60s. So.
66.
At the same time, they planned all this as industrial. So I would imagine that the, when the interstate came through, they had a larger right of way than they actually needed. So when they abandoned that, it went back to what the underlying zoning was. That would be my best guess. So I don't think there's any nuance. I think it's, it's not a creation, as Mary says, not a, it wasn't created by one of the landowners. It was created by governmental action totally out of control. And the request is to make it one zoning category tonight.
That. Can I entertain a motion, please? Mr. Carter?
I'd like to move that we, for the request for zone approximately 2.02 acres at 1749 East 1500 Road from ag two and, and LI to just LI District to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval based on the findings presented in the staff report.
Have a second, please.
Second.
Sure. Rex Road. Any further discussion? Could you call the vote yet, please?
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Baroto?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Duvar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso?
Yes.
Commissioner Munch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rex Road?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Great. Um, thank you both for coming this evening.
Thank you for listening.
Hey, thank you.
I don't envy your job.
Thank you. Have a good evening, both you and Ms. Louder. Item number four. Consider approving a conditional permit, conditional use permit for an event center located at 1629 East 800 Road. Staff for this project is Catherine Week.
Evening. Let me bring my brief report up really quickly here. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. So again, Catherine Week with the Planning Office. This request before you, item number four, is for a conditional use permit. This is for the use being proposed as an event center or public assembly space. The address is located at 1629 East 800 Road, which is west of the city limits. This is the surrounding zoning in the general area. You can see I've highlighted the parcel with a teal outline. It's adjacent to East 800 Road on the west side. And it's firmly located within that AG2 county zoning designation. As you can see, it's primarily AG1, which would be.
Catherine, your, your slides are not advancing?
Yeah, I haven't advanced it yet. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I will in just a moment. Okay. Um, so it's primarily AG1, AG2, and there's a little bit of cluster preservation in this general area. So the key points for this particular project, this subject property is also the location of the applicant's primary residence. The proposal is to take place in their existing barn. It's 35 by 50 foot barn that is already on the property. So they're not constructing anything new at this location. And event center, the CUP request is being submitted so that they can have events, not just for family gatherings, but some periodic events during the year that are booked or open to the public. The applicant has indicated in their application that the structure can accommodate a maximum of approximately 60 occupants and that they only anticipating having four to six events a year. So not a high activity site, but more infrequent, not every, not every weekend. The zoning district again is AG2, and that only permits this use via the special or the conditional use permit process. If approved, there are applicable permits that they would need to get through county zoning and codes. They would need to go through that change of use permit to make sure that building codes are met for the assembly space. And that would be a secondary step if the conditional use permit were approved. So just to remind you of the zoning criteria or the review criteria for conditional use permits in the county, we do look at the zoning and uses of nearby property, the character of the area, the suitability of the property for the restricted uses, those impacts or potential impacts on natural environment, potential impacts on the use of any community facilities or utilities, and then whether or not does it conform with concert comprehensive plan, and should a time limit be appropriate? And then any compliance with any particular zoning regulations that would apply to the use. And those criteria are all reviewed and outlined in the staff report. I can answer any specifics to those specific criteria if you, we get to that point in the discussion. So this is an overview of that subject property. This is actually a reverse. North is to this, the bottom of the picture. So the personal home is on the north portion of the site and the barn is on the south portion. So we're kind of looking at it from the north angle here. But they anticipate that traffic would come from the south up 800 Road to their drive and then proceed to the barn area. So just to give you the orientation on the site. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP for the event center, public assembly space located at 1629 East 800 Road, based on the findings in the staff report that it does meet all of the conditions as outlined. And their staff is also proposing a few conditions just to mitigate any impacts that potentially could be there. Those are. Those are that any signage that they would put up for the event space would comply with the Douglas County zoning and codes regulations for signs. And that they would submit a lighting plan in conformance, uh, with section twelve, three fourteen, uh, required prior to any final approval. At this time, I don't believe they plan to have exterior lighting, but if they were going to have exterior lighting, they would need to submit that lighting plan as part of this condition for the conditional use permit. And that's to mitigate any, um, off-site glare, uh, to neighboring properties. And then any events exceeding that sixty guest, uh, occupancy that they've stated or any outdoor event that would include sound amplification, like speakers outside. Um, zoning and codes has requested that that, uh, be something that they would apply for a special use permit for. So if one of their events was going to be larger or have exterior sound, um, outside of the building as they proposed, they would need that additional, uh, special event permit for that type of event. And that's a way to help keep um, any negative, potential negative impacts, uh, from bleeding out, uh, from the site. We did have some communications, um, that were part of this particular application. They were all included in your packet. Some of the neighbors do have concerns about any type of, you know, use that would have, uh, numbers of people gathering. Um, so those are all outlined in those communications in your packet. Staff did not recommend a time limit on this particular, uh, CUP. As a, a form of consistency, you know, we went back and looked at similar CUPs for event centers. And, um, time limits have not, uh, historically been, uh, placed. Staff also felt that having that requirement for the special event permit, if it would exceed a certain size or type of outdoor use, um, that helps mitigate those impacts and may not, uh, warrant a time limit. But you could certainly consider that as your, at, at your discretion if you feel it's warranted. Uh, that's all staff has at this time. I'd be happy to answer any specifics. And I am unsure if the applicant has come in person or if they are on the line. I'm just not sure. So.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. The applicant is with us, Adam Hazelwood? Yes, if you would like to give your presentation.
Well, I think she did a great job of presenting what we want to do. Uh, just to address a couple of things about signage and lighting. We live there. This is not our main source of income, nor do we want it to be. We will not have signage or lighting or anything like that. This is strictly, we've had requests to have small events such as celebrations of life, um, baby showers, things like that. We're just trying to go through the steps to where we could actually do that a few times here and there. Um, but we don't want to make this an actual business on the side of the road. So we still live there. We want it quiet for ourselves and small. So, but I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Um, if I'll check and see if there's public comment and then we'll probably have questions.
Thank you.
Um, after that. Thank you. So I'd like to invite any, uh, public comment on this item.
Hi, I'm Mark Walther with Strawberry Hill Christmas Tree Farm. We're their neighbors to the south of them, or yes, to the south of them. Uh, we look forward to them getting approved for this. We think it'd be a benefit to the neighborhood and a nice addition. And they, what they've done with the property now is really improved that because we've seen it before and it was in very disrepair for many years. So we hope you approve on their application.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any public comment from online? No, seeing none. Well, if there's no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Duvar?
Uh, question for Catherine. Uh, you mentioned, when you say time limits, are you talking about like how long the CUP is valid for? Are you talking about like ending the events by a certain time of the night?
No. Um, so we, I was talking about whether or not a CUP would be like valid for ten years and then they would have to come back for renewal. Um, and typically those are normally done on higher use, like truck storage or those kind of exterior storage type uses in the county that have a little higher activity. So we did not suggest that on this one.
So, so I mean, one of the, in the public comments, some of the concerns were that, you know, if, if events ran late into the night. Um, is that something that we should consider? You know, having a condition or something like that, given that this is a residence and, uh, the applicant is also indicating that they wouldn't want things to run late because they live there. Is that something we should, we should say something about? Or should we, uh, what, what, any thoughts on that?
Well, you could, I mean, you do have the discretion to modify or add conditions. I would stress that they may not know exactly when the event times would take place. And so penning them in might be a little restrictive. Um, it might be beneficial to ask the applicant specifically what they're intended late, like what they would consider late, um, on the property would be for them and, and that may help guide your discussion a little.
And, and if it is a large event, they would have to come to UCD for, uh, permission, right? I mean, if it's like over.
Yeah, it, it actually, they would go to the county for a county special event permit. But yes, that was a suggestion. And they're anticipating not having super large events and the capacity of the barn, um, as they indicated was only about sixty individuals. So one way to make sure that those potential, uh, negative were not uh, bleeding over onto neighboring. I think the county suggestion that anything larger than that, or if it's outdoor with, you know, loud music, that they would need to come get a special event permit. That's a way to notify the neighbors as well.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelso.
I read in here, it says that, uh, you anticipate four to six events per year. And I'm only bringing this up because within, oh, like a mile or so where I live and family did this basic same thing. And being so close to Lawrence, literally within six months, they had every weekend booked for nine months between, uh, fraternities, sororities, other organizations. What in the CUP process, or can we even do anything? If we say this is allowed, that limits the number.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Catherine can speak to that or Jeff, because that is a potential issue.
Yeah. So that is not, so similar to the way we worded the condition where if they were to have more than sixty guests or outdoor activity with sound amplification, you could include, um, a condition where there would be a maximum number of events per year. That might be something you would want to discuss with the applicant because staff has no indication of whether or not they anticipate that that need would grow or if they even want that need to grow. So. Would you like to ask that?
Yeah. I, I, I mean, that's how, how would you envision limiting that?
Yeah. Well, again, we live there.
Right.
People are going to ask us, right, this is mostly a friends of friends type thing. Um, we have the ability to say no to anything. Um, and we definitely do not want to have frat parties there. Um, that's not our idea of fun. Uh, like I said, we're not looking to do this to make our income off of it. It's, we just want to be able to do this so that when we do have people come for, they want to rent it for a celebration of life or a baby shower or wedding shower or something like that, we'd like to be able to do it and do it the right way. Um, honestly, I've had football watch programs out there that have been probably much later and much louder than anything I'm talking about renting this out for. So, um, I, I don't foresee it being any kind of a problem. As far as the number of events, we're, we're not going to be doing this every weekend. We don't want to do it every weekend. Um, but again, I guess that's up to us to say who we want to be able to rent our space and who we allow and how often we allow it. So.
So if we just pile on that, so in our, in our, uh, report, it, it references four to six events a year. Would you be comfortable if we conditioned our approval based on a certain number? And if yes, what should that number be?
Uh, I would say no more than ten.
To ten a year?
Yes.
And, uh, there's a question, I guess, if you have a football watch party, does that count as one of the ten?
Absolutely not, because it's my personal space. And it's every Sunday. So.
Okay. I kind of thought that. So I'm, I'm wondering that how do you differentiate from your personal use, um, that are louder, longer? And, and, and this, uh, what we're talking about today.
Right. I, well, I, my understanding is that I really don't need to differentiate because this is strictly if somebody wants to purchase the right to have a.
Commercial aspect.
Absolutely. If I want to watch football in that barn all Sunday long, I can. So.
Mr. Carter, you had a question?
Um, so I, I appreciate, um, the discretion that you have as part of your, this being your residence. Um, one concern that I have from a CUP, and I want to clarify this with staff. A CUP is not conditional on the owner or the resident of the property, correct? A CUP stays with the land, with the property. Is that correct?
That's true. It's a you, yeah, use-based. Yeah.
So one, um, concern that I would have about, you know, not having any conditions is that should you choose, your family choose, you know, five, 10 years from now that you want to move? You sell the property and somebody else moves in and says they want to convert it, say, to a rental property? And then they want to rent a commercial, um, event space, then it changes the expectations, what the neighbors or even the planning commission thought that they were setting themselves up for, and then what your neighbors actually have to, you know, deal with. So I would probably be in favor of, you know, setting some kind of limit to the number of commercial events.
Sure.
Um, one other thing, oh, forgive me. Go ahead, please, Mr. Hayles.
If, if it does make any difference, this property is in a living trust of mine and it's to be left as is. But so there is no intention, I mean, I know that can change, but at this time, there is no intention of that property ever going anywhere other than staying the way it is.
Thanks. Thank you. Um, I guess I would say, especially since, you know, you have no intention of having more than, say, ten commercial events per year, I would be inclined to place a limit. Um, the other thing I'm curious about is, um, Catherine, could you inform us, what are the rural noise uh, ordinances, um, right now in terms of, you know, uh, like, you know, uh, uh, disruptions after certain hours? And, you know, whether weekdays versus weekends? Is there anything like that?
Un- unfortunately, I am not that familiar with the county ordinance regulations, but I do know, um, that they are likely complaint-based, just like they would be here in the city. Um, so one reason why a CUP is an appropriate tool for these type of things is that you know, if any conditions that you place on the CUP, if for some reason they're found to be out of compliance with those, for instance, having outdoor music outside without having the special event permit in addition to the CUP, then they're at risk of, they either have to get back into compliance with zoning and codes, or they are at risk of losing their CUP altogether. So.
Got it. Um, so maybe I'll turn this back. I mean, I'm not sure if this is for Catherine or for Jeff, but in the past, when we've dealt with the CUPs for urban properties, we have specified things like outdoor amplified, amplified music, not past a certain hour, those sorts of things. Can you uh, maybe help us, help me, um, or remind me what kinds of things we've done in i- i- in city limits when it comes to those sorts of things?
There is, yeah, it's a great question. There's a wide range of things I would say that have gone into those, uh, in the city for special use permits. There are abilities to limit the hours of operation, limit the, um, frequency of events throughout the year. You know, you can do it, you know, not more than one per quarter, one per month, one per, you know, not, there's limits on those things. Uh, this also has a timeframe boundary that you could establish similar to what you do in the city. The, the special use permit shall expire in five years' time and the applicant is due to then come back before you to reconsider that. So you can put boundaries in terms of both the events that are going on, uh, the hours, the hours of operation of the events, the number of the events, or also a boundary on the use itself and had it sunset and expired at a point in time.
Okay.
I want to say one thing. So I mean, I think the way that staff has thought about this is because the applicant has to go back to the county each time, I feel like that's their way of checking that the applicant is not abusing, uh, the CUP. So I think that, to, to me, makes me very comfortable with, with what the county has come up with as a, as a reasonable check on the applicant.
The, just as a, as a point of clarification, it would only go before, back to the county staff if it exceeds sixty people or the event. So it would have parameters that it could proceed under the conditional use permit, but for that.
Understood. Understood.
I have a question. How do, how do you know, um, or what is sound amplification? Like, how is that like a fine term?
So they have, they have indicated that this use is primarily for inside the building. And so the reason why they put the sound amplification would be if there are any live music with speakers outside, that's sound amplification. So if the live music is creeping from the inside to the outside already, that is going outside of what this CUP has, you know, been presented to staff as. So.
Okay. Cause I'm just, I'm thinking even the football has sound amplification from what I can tell. So, okay.
A lot more than a baby shower.
What about hours of operation?
It was going to depend on the event. Um, most of these.
What's the latest that you would expect?
For one of these, I'd ten, eleven o'clock maybe.
Okay.
Depending on what it is, like a retirement party. You know, you're probably going to do it after work and it's probably going to run till ten or eleven.
Because one thing that struck me is most of the CUPs for event centers in the county have had hours of operation. And I mean, this one does not. And, and to Commissioner Carter's point, if we don't put them in now, we're stuck. Um, just like we saw a quarry not too long ago where they got a CUP in the seventies with zero conditions on it. And it's still in effect. So if we say eleven o'clock and you.
Well, I guess I would ask, what are your other conditions on the other places you're talking about? What are there?
There about that.
Yeah.
And, and I think sometimes they've been separated by weekdays and weekends. Um, you know, people, neighbors are going to be getting up in the morning.
Sure.
And, you know, Friday night and Saturday night have always been considered, you get to go a little later. Um, so if you're saying ten or eleven, I don't know, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock? I don't, I don't know what we're going to say up here, but if we just say ten o'clock on period. On weekdays, eleven o'clock on Friday and Saturday, is that, that would work with what you're anticipating?
I wouldn't, I would anticipate, yes. I, like I said, we've, we've had football watch parties there. My wife's birthday party there, things that we've never had any.
Yeah, those are your person.
Right, exactly. But I'm just saying to the time limits, those things have gone longer than, of course, ten or eleven o'clock. And there's never been any issues. So I don't see eleven o'clock being an issue at all. So if the last guy walks out at eleven thirty, I don't think we're going to have any.
We're only talking about when you're leasing.
Correct.
An event. That's all we're talking about here tonight. I mean, personal parties can go until the police are called.
Yeah.
That's between you and.
But, and so we've, so we've got, you know, per your request, we put it at ten events a year. Uh, ten PM on weeknights, eleven PM Friday and Saturday night. And other than that, the, the ones that staff already has in here. I can't think what else we should.
I agree, because it's already, it already includes amplified sounds. I think.
And a special event permit for anything that's bigger or outside, which is a different one. The only other one that's brought up is, um, from Reba Bennett about outside bonfires.
Yeah, let's talk about that.
Well, the county has burn ban days and we're in one now.
Yep. And they also have, uh, records of calls, which you'll, if you go back and look, every bonfire I've ever had, I've called in to the county hotline. So we have the, I actually have the burn hotline right on my phone. If we have a bonfire, then we call it in. So.
Perfect. Because I have to tell you, I'm on a little subcommittee that's working with emergency management and the fire department about updating those regulations and how they might be enforced. So kudos for paying attention and having that application on there because the county is really starting to take it seriously.
Well, as they should. And I have some, I was going to say, I have a pretty important neighbor that I definitely would not want to jeopardize. So.
He's on, he's on my list too.
All right. Well, I think we have most of our conditions, unless anybody else has something.
But any other conditions?
I, no, I think it is important to set those conditions for you. And you're saying eleven o'clock's great on the weekend, Friday, Saturday, ten o'clock on the others. If we set it at ten and that maximum of sixty, you want to do anything other than that? And that maximum of sixty, you want to do anything other than that.
All in.
You have to go back to the county to apply. It seems to me those are reasonable conditions.
Thank you.
I do think, I would say, as Commissioner Kelso said. W- once this becomes official. Doesn't take long for word to get out and you will have a lot more people coming to you and say, oh. You're out in the county and you have a spot and I think you will have to learn to say no.
Yeah.
For your. Yes.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Mackenzie. Um.
It's my wife, sorry.
I used to be the private event coordinator for Hollywood Casino in Chicago. I'm very good at setting limitations and telling people, plus I live there. We don't want to be up past eleven on a Friday or Saturday for somebody else's event. So. I'm good with being a realist and telling people what we need to do and what we can't do. So.
So when Adam gets the call, you'll say, you'll have to speak.
Absolutely. Hundred percent.
You're a smart man.
Uh, we've done nine, we get one more for the year. Now, now place your bids, right?
There you go.
I like it.
Thank you. Commissioner Devoe had a question.
So, so, so let's say next year, I mean, this becomes very successful as the commissioners are saying, and then you want to do fifteen. Jeff, do they, do they have to come back and say, hey, can we do fifteen next year?
Correct. Do we come back?
Do you have that recourse? If you guys decide you want to come back?
Yes, this is Catherine Weeks. So if they wanted to amend their CUP, if for some reason they decide they want to do more than what is provided with the conditions that are set. Then they would need to do an amendment to their CUP and come back before um, come back through the prospect to do an amendment to that CUP.
Okay.
And I, I think the neighbors have made comp and been very specific about some things. And that's who's going to come back and say. Yeah, it wasn't sixty. Oh, it lasted after eleven.
Right.
That, that there are procedures for doing that.
And Jeff, can I just clarify that language? We don't actually amend CUPs. We grant a new CUP. Is that correct?
That'd be correct. It would be, it basically would expire the first CUP and the second one would be modifying conditions.
Replace the existing.
Correct.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yes, you're correct, Commissioner Carpenter.
So would somebody like to work that into a motion?
I've got something written down here if you'd like. Kind of taking notes as we were going. Um, a move we approve, uh, conditional use permit, CUP dash twenty-three dash zero, 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 nine. For an event center, public assembly use located at sixteen twenty-nine east eight hundred road. Based on the findings outlined in the body of the staff report, subject to the conditions lifted, listed in the staff report with two additional items. One, adding the condition to limit the number of commercial events to no more than ten per year. Two, adding. Hour, adding a limitation for operating hours to no later than ten PM on weekdays and eleven PM on Friday and Saturday. And forwarding onto the board of county commissioners with a recommendation for approval.
I'd second that.
Second. All right. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to make, mention one thing. It's pretty rare for applicants to have neighbors come in and support it at nine PM.
We love our day.
On a weekday. So.
Actually, when I saw them here, I was like.
So, this, this noting that. I'm going to order if I may, just to make sure we got that captured correctly. The, the, the two added conditions were the, limit the number of commercial events to ten per year and limit the operating hours to ten PM. On weekdays, but to eleven PM on Friday and Saturday?
Correct.
So we're counting Sunday as a week.
Counting Sunday as a week. Okay.
That was my.
Or weekday.
I, I actually had weekend written down before and I changed that to specifically say Friday and Saturday.
Does it make sense to say eleven PM on Friday and Saturday and ten PM all other nights?
Yep.
Um, that would, great with that.
But, so those are second.
Do we need to?
Point of order.
Everybody. Would you agree with that?
Yes. Agreed. I mean, I, that clarifies it. That clarifies it.
Okay, so you, are you, uh, is that, that's a friendly amendment or do you accept that amendment?
Comfortable with that.
Okay, so we have an amended motion made. Do we have second to that emotion? Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, any further discussion? Okay, can you call the vote, please, Jeff?
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Baroto?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Duvar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso?
Yes.
Commissioner Munch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Thank you. I was beginning to think none of you were hungry. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to support. Okay, uh, let's see. That uh concludes our regular agenda. Uh, do we have any other miscellaneous new or old business to consider this evening?
Done this evening, I'm aware of.
Well, I would just say that coming up is a meeting of the land development code steering committee. I think it, is it on the twenty-ninth? The Thursday next week, I believe.
Yep.
It'd be March thirtieth.
March thirtieth. So next, um, where. I think the hope was we're actually going to be presented some of the recommendations on code link. Like everybody would be looking for what comes out.
I can offer a little bit of clarification out. The, the applicant is still uh drafting that first module. Um, what we'll be uh looking for at that meeting will be some uh more feedback and insight on a, 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 a next step of public outreach that we're, we're proposing.
Well, everybody, if you go to the, to the website. Page for that and look at that, maybe you have comments, get those to.
Where is it, Jim?
It'll, it'll be where we have our mid-month meeting.
Well, I am particularly, we've had our place set on fire three times. By people who have not followed the code.
Oh, we're back to burn ban.
Yes, three times. And, and I have made.
Talk about burn ban afterward.
Yeah, and I've made recommendations for that. So I.
So that was for the.
CERN.
Lawrence develop, the development code. Okay, any other? Is this, okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? Can you call the vote, Jeff, please?
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Baroto?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Duvar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso?
Yes.
Commissioner Munch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, everyone.